Good morning, everyone. I'll call the August 28th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Before we get, Mr. Hale will not be here today. He had a little bit of surgery yesterday. He's doing fine. And I know the board sends all their well wishes for him and a speedy recovery. We have Pastor Jeremy Farley from Summit Baptist Church here to the Evan dedication. Would everyone please stand and remain standing for the pledge?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning, Lord, with thankful hearts, God, that you are a risen Savior. And God, as we gather together this morning, Lord, we ask you, Father, that you would have your blessing upon everything that is done in this place. God, I pray that you'd bless the men and women that serve on this board, God, knowing that it is a thankless job, but it is a God-ordained job. I pray, Father, you'd give them wisdom, God, that you'd bless their homes, that you'd bless their families. And God, as they make decrees, Father of government, I ask you, Lord, that you would help them to not take the political move, but, God, to take that which is right. God, I pray that you'd bless this organization's many employees, and, God, that you'd touch their families, that you'd touch their homes. God, that you bless their marriages and their children. And, Lord, I ask you above all else, Father, that as a community, Lord, we would enjoy the bountiful blessings that come from you. God, knowing that righteousness exalteth the nation, but sin is reproach to any people. Lord, would you bless us as a people? And, God, may we be sure to give you honor and glory, because it is in your name that we ask this prayer. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome, everyone, this morning. We'll get right into our agenda. First thing, citizens' time. Ms. Myers?
Good morning, gentlemen, ladies. I had asked you several weeks ago to, on behalf of the residents of Speedway, to request DEQ water monitoring of the Speedway Tributary into Cripple Creek. And I was wondering if you had followed through on that.
Stephen, we have an update on anything pertaining to that. Bill?
Just the Dyke's people that have been made aware of it and all that, but have not had any additional reports that have come from them. We'll follow up with DEQ and see what might have happened.
Right. Please. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Terry Ogul. Morning, Mr. Ogul.
Good morning. How are you all doing? I came up a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, and talked about the Ivanhoe Road. Our co-inocents all about it and everything. They did come in and they reduced the speed limit to 50 miles an hour, but I think it should be 45 mile an hour, because that's the crookedest part of the road from Fort Chisholm High School to Shepherd School. And they're still coming through there wide open and everything. So it's a very dangerous place right there in 45 mile an hour. Plus, there needs to be some roadwork down there, you know, the bank at Daddy's Place. And the bank comes right down to the yellow line. There's no runoff, nothing, no ditch or nothing. It's really dangerous. And where the state ain't mowing or hadn't mowed, the guy across from me, he had his wife out there watching so he didn't get run over, so he could weed eat the stuff down so he could get out of his driveway. And, you know, really something needs to be done, is that road right through there.
Well, Mr. Russell is supposed to be here this morning around 10 o'clock, and we can discuss it with him then.
Yeah. And I'd offer to give them the land if they'd just cut the bank back some, but I sold the other part of it, so I don't own that. They'd have to get in touch with him. But when I own both, that whole curve there, I told them that they could come in there and cut it off. And I even had a place they could put the dirt, they didn't have to haul it, just right up on the hill and dump it in a holler up there. But, you know, I'd be willing to do anything if we can get that thing laid back some or whatever, to try to make it safer for everybody.
Let me ask you quick. You willing to give them land in the curve?
Yeah. Yeah. If they'll come in there and if they'll give me the dirt to fill up a ditch up on my land, all I gotta do is haul it right up on the hill, you know, before the double-wide sets up there. And I'd be willing to help them out all I could. But it would help me out, because I can see to get out of my dad's place better. Well, it's my place now, but it was my dad's. And that road and therefore the driveway is, is a probably eight-inch drop-off. Those people run off it all the time.
You're talking about the S curve?
Yeah. Yeah. The 1444 Ivanhoe Road is where it's at.
Right there where that little boy got killed.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, there's something needs to be done, or somebody else is gonna get killed, because...
What'd they lower it to?
Fifty.
Fifty.
But it should be 45. You go on up the road there, and from where that White House is, Charlie Fels's place on down to Fort Chisholm High School is 45. And that's probably the straightest part of the road through there, except where they made New 94. And it's, they come through them around them curves, it's hard to get pulled out. It is, because, man, they were flying. And I'll be in the garage working, and you can hear them run off the side of the road. They ain't wrecking right now, but it's such a deep drop-off, you can see where they're scrubbing their axles and stuff with all the horse trailers and stuff that comes through there, going camping over in Coal Branch and places. And it's, it's just, it needs to be fixed.
I noticed where they put the 50 mile an hour sign there next to Dunford Road.
Yeah.
Well, right where they have the 35 mile an hour, don't know where the yellow sign.
Yeah. But I don't know whether they obey that yet 35 mile an hour, or whether they're going by the 55, the 50 mile an hour sign. But I seen what it, and, you know, I appreciate they have done something. But the road really needs to be worked on. I mean, that's, that's one of the big things. And the state needs to mow, because the guy across the road there, I talked to him this morning, and he can't get pulled out of his driveway, because weeds are so high. And he had his wife out there watching, so he didn't get run over and was trying to weed eat it down to where he could get out, and see what was going on. So, but that's...
What kind of sign did they put? What's the 35 mile an hour? Where they put the yellow sign?
They put a 50 mile an hour sign coming toward Fort Chisholm. And then about 50 feet, they can put a yellow sign that says that a picture of a curve at 35. And why?
That's not enforceable.
It's not enforceable sign. I've never understood why VDOT even has it.
Yeah.
It's not enforceable if it's, it looks to me like if it's good enough to advise you to do 35, change the speed limit to 35, but...
Yeah. Hard to re-fund.
But I stick with this, and they did do something, you know, and it has, it has slowed them down some, but still it ain't slowed them down enough.
They put a 50 mile an hour speed limit up there at the church, right in that area. We've not seen that do it.
Yeah. They moved the 45 mile an hour from right there in front of the little white church where you cut, go across the mountain, and they moved it down about halfway to that White House. And then from there to where the new Run 94 starts, it's, it's 50 mile an hour that comes back up. But that's the crookedest part of the road. I didn't understand that.
I think if you'd ever cut some of that curve off, I'd have to go on.
Yeah. Well, I still, I think I stated that the last time I came up. I stopped down there, took it up on the phone to talk to him, and he said, "Oh, we'll come over and look at it." And I never did hear nothing from him.
Well, she'd have to lie to finish the new road.
Yeah, he would, too, if they would take it, straighten that thing out all the way through there. But now, I just thought I'd run down and let y'all know that they had done something, but there is a whole lot more that needs to be done.
Oh, we'll talk to him. Koi put that on his list to talk to Mr. Russell this morning about.
Yeah. If anybody ever runs that road through there, you can see what I'm talking about, because the bank comes straight off into the yellow line on the side of the road. There ain't no place to pull off and everything.
I know.
Another question. I live over in Prime Booker Estates, and that road is a, we own the road. Is there any way to get that took over by the state, or how? I know you used to have a program where the taxpayers paid so much, and the county would pay so much.
Stephen, you want to go through that process?
Yeah. If you and I can set up a time to meet, if you'll just give me your phone number or whatever, we'll give you a call. And Ms. Cass from the Planning Commission Department, and we can look at your subdivision and talk about the revenue sharing options with...
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's fine. You want my phone number now?
Yeah.
It's 699-00034.
We'll call you instead of meeting and looking at it.
My cell phone number is 620-4768.
Say that again, Terry.
Cell phone?
620-4768.
What's your address there?
236 Timberland Drive. I'm just very light and sound.
We'll pull some plants in the air.
It's probably a bit of use, I think, every 11-hour, takes about, over high for the launch, a little bit around.
Okay.
God's like our best, and I know we're gonna get yourself...
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Ogul. That's everyone that's signed up. Anyone else would like to speak during citizens' time? Here none, I'll close citizens' time. Next item on our agenda is payment of invoices. I entertain a motion to approve. Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion of seconds. Any invoice any board member would like to pull out or discuss? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 And Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting on August the 14th and 23rd of 2018. Entertain a motion to approve.
Submove.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any correction or changes need to be made to minutes? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Move into old business with County Rescue Squad, Board of Director appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I have spoken with Stan Burd, who is currently serving on the board, and he has indicated that due to health concerns, he needed to resign from the board. He and I played phone tape for quite a while about it, but I did finally get in touch with him. Did not receive a letter, but did receive verbal confirmation that he was interested in resigning from the board. Express our appreciation to him for the time he served with us. We do have a vacancy on that board at this time.
Okay. Does anybody have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Charles Miller. He currently works for the Whitfield Fire Department. Before that, he spent about seven years as a supervisor at Guardian, and he just wants the opportunity to serve his community.
Okay. We have a second on the nomination.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any questions, comments, discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So appointed. Next item, water rates. Mr. Burr, you want to do a summary before we take this up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you are aware, we advertised for a 10% increase...
And had a public hearing at our last meeting. We recessed and had a work session later that week. What was advertised was a 10% increase, which was included the residential and the commercial rates both, which would have taken them from $1,890 to $20.79 for the initial 1,000 gallons, and from $945 to $10.40 for each 1,000 gallons thereafter. On page 50 of your agenda is also the alternative that was discussed in the committee, and that being with a 5% increase on the residential water, increasing the minimum from $1,890 to $1,985, and increasing the per 1,000 gallons from $945 to $993. The commercial rate would still be the 10% increase to $20.79 and the $10.40.
Okay. That's summary. Entertain a motion to accept either one.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go 5%. We're all moving 10% motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? With not having a second, motion dies. We'll move right along. Apex lease agreement. Mr. Burr?
The Apex lease agreement, there's nothing in your package, but last, last week, had some meetings with the, the authority and also in reviewing their agreement with the management company. It, there is an incentive part of the agreement with the management company that has been proposed and being discussed for, if they're successful, how, how they will pay an incentive fee, what their incentive fee will be based upon. Part of that had some effect on our, our Apex lease agreement, because we are waiving payments for the first two years, and then we were waiving half the payments for the full lease payment over the next three years, up to a five-year period. I wanted to make certain that by waiving those payments, that we were not in turn incentive, giving any of that incentive fee to the management company due to our waiving of those payments. So we are looking at a possible restructure of that lease agreement to look after the board's interest in making certain the lease payments are, are the top priority. We have also received since that time some information from bond counsel, and we have a meeting scheduled at 3:00 on the phone this afternoon with SNG Management Group to discuss the, the management lease with Matthew Miller and them. And then, based upon where those discussions goes, that will determine if we need to make some revisions on our lease agreement. So I just wanted to let you all know about that, be aware of it. Mr. Farley and I have discussed this morning, he will be joining us on the conversation this afternoon. In light of that, and in order to get all of these agreements in place, I would, I would recommend that the board look at possibly recessing this meeting and reconvening maybe next Tuesday afternoon or evening for a brief discussion on revisions to the lease agreement that may be necessary. And a lot of the, the revisions that are going into the maintenance agreement, the arrangements, the reason for the arrangements going into the lease agreement or management agreement is that the management agreement has to have the right provisions set into it to make certain that it does not have any impact on our tax-exempt bond that has been issued on this project. So the, I received the management agreement early last week, had the incentive, I sent it immediately to our bond counsel for them to review to make certain it was in compliance with that. And Friday, we got word that there were some concerns about it. So I just put this on the agenda, just so you all were aware that we may need to make some revisions on our lease agreement, just to make certain that it, it doesn't affect anything on the bond, tax-free bond payment. So don't have any information now. Scott and I should have more information by this afternoon. We will email you all any copies of that. But at the end of the meeting, we'll discuss a time for possibly recessing to next week.
What date next week did you suggest?
I was looking at just next Tuesday afternoon, 5, 6, 7 o'clock, whatever works best for the...
September the 4th?
Yes.
I don't think that I can make it, but you all can. But there's enough of you. It won't bother me.
I can be available by phone. I'll be in Florida, so. But I can be available by phone. I will be available by phone.
Did you confirm when the planning commission was meeting? The 10th. Thank you. Okay.
Anything else on old business, Mr. Burr?
What time, what time are you gonna sit there?
What's good for you all?
Tuesday afternoon is fine with me. I just need a little time.
I mean, we do, for y'all to have work schedules, I mean, 5:00 is fine, 4:00 is fine, 6:00 is fine, whatever's good for everybody.
5:30 better.
5:30?
5:30's fine.
5:30. Okay.
I'll be on vacation soon.
You come back from vacation?
I'll be on my way back, but I'm not gonna rush.
Again?
Reports. Ms. Quinn? Morning, Lori.
Morning. Get all my things together here. You have your July financial statement in your packet, and you'll notice that it's different than what it has been in the past, because the past months, we've had our ending balance for the month and the change from the previous month. In talking with Mr. Grant, this time it was put together differently, simply because with the Tyler system, we have what's called a Month 13, which contains all of our entries for FY '18 that occur in July, but we need to get them included in FY '18 and not carry them over to FY '19. So it makes things look really weird financially for the fiscal year '18 at this point in time. So with that, you'll note on the general fund, it's showing a balance at the end of July of about $26,000, or, excuse me, $26,439,000. That is about $10 million less than the ending balance for June, but it's simply because we, with the schools, they do an advanced summer payroll. They go ahead and pay everything in June, and then it actually gets dispersed to the employees in the month that it's supposed to. And in addition to that, again, the, the Month 13 entries, and speaking with Mr. Grant and Mr. Bear, my understanding are there's some Apex expenses that are included in there that I will let Mr. Bear elaborate on that, because that is beyond what I deal with in the day-to-day. But that's your general fund balance, and that is part of the reason for your difference there. However, in the consolidated account, our balance for the end of July is $55,129,263. And I'll let Mr. Bear pick on that.
Yeah, on the Apex, we have, we have been, what, the good news on the Apex is that our draw has gone into the Carter Banking Trust, that we just recently did the revision on that note. So we should be receiving very promptly about $4.9 million reimbursement for expenditures that we have on the Apex Center. So that will also help bring that balance back up.
And that had not come in as of yesterday. Mr. Grant had inquired about that this morning, but we haven't received that yet, so. But that's part of your difference there. So starting with next month, we'll get back on track of the report that you're used to seeing, and more money in the general fund. Does look a little weird at this point. Overall, as far as tax collections, I feel like I'm probably giving you all the same information every time that I come, as far as that's concerned. But July is normally a slow month, but I felt like we had a very successful July, and a lot of it is because of DMV stops. The Sheriff's Office were trying to send out a lot of warrants in debt, so one officer was aggravating me the other day, and I told him it was job security for him because of the warrants and debt that we're issuing. But a lot of folks are paying because of the methods that we are pursuing. But, but we did have a very good July. Normally, July is pretty dead in the office. It's slow, but we were kind of steady all month long. And then also, on the very last page of the financial statement, where you have the Treasurers' Collection Report, and I had mentioned this last meeting, but you'll notice that the second line from the bottom lists land redemption of $42,905. And again, that is from the excess proceeds from the judicial tax, excuse me, that was held in May of 2016. Circuit Court holds those proceeds for two years. If they're not claimed, they get turned over to the locality. So we received those in July. So that's what that $43,000 is. And then one other note, and Mr. Hale isn't here for me to give him the answer to his question, but last month, he had asked about the sales and use tax comparison of fiscal year '17 to fiscal year '18. And I looked back and just picked up end-of-year numbers. We've increased, as of July of 2018, our sales and use tax revenue account is up a little over $313,000. So it has increased for us over the past year. So to kind of give you an idea of where that's at. But that's all that I have from that side. Are there any questions or comments?
I just have one question on the revenue, the VSTOP grants. You got two of them in there, one's in red.
That's a, I'm gonna say a Mr. Grant question in a roundabout way. One you can use, and the one that's in red, you do not post anything to, because when we, on our chart of accounts, any of the accounts that are in red, he has, well, what it is, it's, it's an old account, and that's the one we are not supposed to post to. We're supposed to post to the one that's in black. But let me find it here. I didn't print mine in color, but let me find it. And I think it's a difference of funds as well.
What are funds in one? Both of those are funds that are...
What page are you on?
First item under federal revenues, page...
Eight.
Eight.
The first one with the Fund 1100, that's a general fund item, and the second one's a 1300, which is Police Activity Fund, but the VSTOP grant posts into General Fund.
If you remember, the VSTOP grant transferred to the, out of the Sheriff's Office, to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and at that point in time, it changed the funds that it was in.
I just wanted to ask a question. I've never seen nothing in red, and I just wanted...
He color codes us so that we know not to do that. Red means stop, don't do anything with that account, but that's what that is.
Mr. Burr, is that one of the ones that we can delete? I know we cleaned up a bunch of line items, who was working on the budget, but...
Yeah. On this report, we can probably look at getting that updated to, to take that out, yes.
And I'm not sure. I know sometimes with systems, depending on how much past activity or...
Historical data, yeah.
...histories with it, you can't delete it out for a certain number of fiscal years. It kind of cycles through, and I don't know if that's one or not.
On the expenditure budgets, it's a lot easier on things that we're not using. On these reports, it's more difficult, depending on historical data that goes with them.
Anyone have any more questions from Ms. Quinn?
And I have one other item. I'd like to thank you all for allowing us, as in the county, to host the, the employee appreciation picnic. It was a lot of fun. I'd never been to Foster Falls. I'm embarrassed to say that. But it was very enjoyable. Enjoyed, enjoyed watching the, the cornhole folks, and, and I think everyone had a good time. But I think it's great, because a lot of departments don't get to see people from other departments. So, for example, my group, they're wondering who's in the Water Department, because they don't see Don, they don't see a lot of those guys that are out in the field. And so it gives them the opportunity to know who our other coworkers are, because we, we work with the admin office up here for the most part, as far as Stephen and a lot of his staff, some of the other constitutional offices, but we don't see everybody. So it's always fun to get together and, and just kind of enjoy good food and fellowship. But thank you all very much, and, and I hope it's something that you all will continue to host, because I think it's a, a great, great event for us.
Well, thank you. I wish I could have been there, but things happen that...
They do. Beyond our control, it's part of it.
Yeah. Farming that had to be done.
Yes.
And I didn't get a chance to attend. How many board members did attend?
Three.
I'm glad at least three got to attend.
Yeah. So we'll improve the odds for next year. Thank you.
Hopefully. Ms. Barker, I think she may still be on vacation. I see some pictures, but I don't know, she may be back. Sheriff Dunning? Morning, Sheriff.
We've got a gun transfer from a retiree that, by code, allows them to purchase their service weapon for a dollar. And Nisa Cook has accepted position with the schools teaching the criminal justice program at the vocational school. And we've let her take her gun. We took a dollar out of Georgia's candy jar. So, but y'all need to approve.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Submove.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So far, for the month of August, we've collected 528 bags of trash weighing 15, almost 16,000 pounds, and we covered about 45 miles in doing so. Also, we were notified, we've been in discussion with Commonwealth Attorney's Office for a couple of months since Jerry left to do the collection of fines from traffic tickets. Currently, General District Court has about $6 million worth of fines and costs. About half of that's court costs, the other $3 million, about two, about two of those, $2 million, and the other $3 million is owed to Whitfield County. And we've got, finally got the paperwork signed, and we're notified... And we've got, finally got the paperwork signed, and we're notified by Penn Credit just late last week that the process is getting ready to start. So that should be really good for the county. And other than that, I don't have it.
And it may be beneficial for Ms. Gwynn, Mr. Grant, you and I, and the Commonwealth Attorney to sit down at some point in time and just make certain we understand when those funds start coming in, how they'll start coming in, to make certain that we're maybe adding another line to Mr. Ball's report there that we're talking about for the special collection, or at least for the tracking of it, to keep track of it separate from what's coming in through our normal fine collection process, just to see our response to this.
I hope we can do it the way we discussed a few months ago when we thought this was going to happen. I'd really like to do it that way, put a new line item in where it goes there. From there, we send it back to Penn, what we owe them. And give the Commonwealth Attorney's Office what we owe them, and then we'll do our 80-20 split.
Yep.
So I hope we get to do it that way.
That's the goal, and I think it's a good tracking way to do it. We'll work with Penn and them to make certain how we get those steps in.
The money's actually coming in already. Some people have sent money to General District Court that they had to turn around and send to Penn. So they're, I think the guy said they're gonna pay us once a month. So it'll probably take a couple of months to smooth that out. But if we do it that, the way we discussed a few months ago, I think it'll just work out good.
I do.
Any questions? Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, Water Committee report.
All right. The Water Committee man on August 21, 2018, makes the following recommendation. First is to accept coalfield services bid in the amount of $149,000 for Fort Chisholm Waste Water Treatment Plant Headworks Improvement Project.
Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any question or discussion? Here or none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next.
Second is to reject all bids received for the Skater Expansion Project due to the coming in over budget. Staff will work on soliciting term proposals for the project.
Okay, again, come from committee, doesn't need a second. We'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next item.
And the third one is to proceed with soliciting bids and submit a funding application for replacing the water line on the Max Meadow Bridge.
Again, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Stephen, you want to tell them, tell the rest of the board about the line over the bridge?
Yeah, at the end of the last meeting, I believe it was, I just mentioned to you all that we had an issue with the Max Meadow Bridge with the line. Some of it been monitored, the Water Committee had been aware of it. And we had looked at previously finding, trying to find funding to relocate and go through the creek with that line. It had some areas that were failing, hanging on the bridge. Don had staff regularly looking at it, and there were a couple more areas that broke loose, and it became a critical repair path needed. Currently, the line is cut off on both sides of the bridge to keep from water running through it. That means Max Meadows is still functioning as they always have been. They're served by a well on that side, but it doesn't give them any backup. Obviously, in this case, we could just go in and turn the water back on and run it through the bridge if necessary. But if that were to fail, then they don't have any backup, or that line would break completely. The committee reviewed it, and the timeframe that it takes to get all the permits in place to do a creek crossing is not timely enough, and they are looking at recommending proceeding with replacing the line on the bridge. Mr. Crisp has been in touch with VDOT already and discussing with them, so looking at proceeding with that.
Any questions, comments? Don, do VDOT, do they have any plans on, you know, anything with the bridge in the near future?
No, they don't. The last brief inspection I did, they didn't have anything that more to any major repairs in the near future, from what I understand.
What Mr. Crisp is handing out is the memo to me as a follow-up to the committee's Basically, goes to the discussion, the last two paragraphs, in order to proceed with the engineering and construction in a timely fashion and to reestablish a connection, we would need to amend and appropriate the budget and estimated cost of $120,815. And also need to approve the engineering agreement that goes with it. We would still make application to funding sources for this, but this, that's the way, at least we have money in place to proceed with this project.
You want to take this and go ahead and, well, we'll vote on what the Water Committee, then we'll do another on this. Okay, we have a motion, doesn't need a second because it's come from committee. Do a roll call vote, Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to amend and appropriate the $120,815.
I would make the motion to do that and to approve the, the, the engineering.
Engineering agreement?
Engineering agreement.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion, questions?
What's the timeline of having a project?
We're gonna push it along as fast as we can. We'll get the contract back to engineers and have them provide us the schedule. We're gonna try to get it done, I'd say, by the end of fall, if we can move it that fast. We don't have to go through a lot of permitting, but we do have to go through VDOT. They'll have to, the engineers will have to analyze the load rating on the bridge since we're gonna rehang. If we're not making any major changes, which we're not, I don't think it'll, that'll take a lot of time. So somewhat dependent on their review, but we're gonna push it along as fast as we can.
Hope the Baylor line holds it long?
Yeah. Well, I don't think, the way we seen the pictures of it, I don't think there's no hope for it. I think if they turn the water back on, it'd probably blow the line out, so...
Soon might find out.
Okay, any more questions? Here or none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
On this subject, and Don and I had a brief discussion about a yes, and we may end up having to have a special called water meeting. We had a couple of projects that we put in the budget this year. One of them is Mr. Hale's always requested during the study of all of the fire hydrant lines and everything else. We had that included in the budget. We also had included in the budget, and we've advertised for the tank.
Well, Fort Chisholm Waste Water Extension.
Yeah, Fort Chisholm Waste Water Extension. And then we do have the other thing on tank repairs and stuff like that. We haven't...
Soliciting proposals, yeah.
Soliciting proposals. But I don't know if we're gonna get any funding assistance with this. Even if we get Mount Rogers funding, it's only about a 50% funding on it.
Yeah, county has to match 50%.
And if we don't come up with a recommendation on any type of a water rate increase to start bringing additional funding, we may have to go back and scrap several of these projects and not do them because we were already, as we talked before, a little bit in the negative on that. So this has got to be a top priority project, so we know we've got to go ahead with this. But we probably are gonna need to get the Water Committee together pretty soon and talk about these other projects. And if you want to refer the water rates back to them for discussion on that as well, we can do that.
So be it.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item.
Last one is to grant a leak adjustment to Mr. Mark Almond Trout, account number 103186-02, one-half his original June 18 bill. The original bill was $626.54, and adjusted bill would be $313.27.
And a little bit of explanation to this. This was a cattle watering trough out in the field that had, the valve had failed, and it was over, and it was overflowing, the watering thing. Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
I will, just so all the board members are aware, there is a leak adjustment policy that is out there that the Water Committee follows for leaks, and those are handled administratively as it goes through. This leak does not meet our leak adjustment policy. Mr. Crisp correctly declined the leak adjustment. That's why it went to committee for discussion. So that's why this one's coming before you, and you don't typically see these. So this is the first instance that I'm aware of that we've had a leak adjustment request like this on a watering, on a watering trough.
So it doesn't meet because of the amount or because of the incident?
Because of the incident, yeah. Basically, it doesn't meet the rule policy.
Any more questions?
Is your normal policy to split it in half?
No. Normal policy is you do a six-month average, and then you go back and you charge them the cost of the water plus a 15% markup fee, and you write off the rest of the bill. This one is just the recommendation from the committee.
The norm, to qualify for a normal one, unless I'm mistaken, it has to be a water leak that can't be seen, like under a house.
Or underground line.
Something that you're not gonna notice leaking. I mean, this one here, if they went anywhere near it, they would have seen water going down through the feet. Should have.
Yeah.
I know mine does anyway. So...
Any more questions? Here or none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Mr. Baer, you want to take up Resolution 2018 during the water?
Yes, I was gonna ask you if you would do that, sir.
Okay, I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Smith County and With County has a specific, specific need to work to establish an interconnection of their drinking water system in order to provide water sources to additional county residents, water sources, redundant water sources, and to allow for more stable, long-term financial plan for both organizations. Whereas Mount Rogers Planting District Infrastructure Planning and Technical Assistance Fund fits the needs of this type of project, and whereas the County of Smith and With desires to comply, compile a preliminary engineering report, I mean, which will outline the feasibility, benefits, and financial impact, and consideration of a regional interconnection. Therefore, be it resolved that With County Board Supervisors hereby agree to jointly and regionally seek grant funding from the Mount Rogers Planting District Commission for the preliminary engineering report of the regional interconnection in the following amount. Smith-With interconnection preliminary engineering report, $20,000. Therefore, be it further resolved that this resolution be submitted with any application for funding assistance for project planning and construction, and that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board Supervisors adopted the 28th day of August 2018. Entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. You want to summarize this, Mr. Baer?
Yeah, Smith County and With County have long been talking about the possibility of an interconnect. This is just simply looking for grant funding. Smith County had contacted us. They have adopted a similar resolution to this effect. And basically, this just allows the engineers to come in, do a study, and like we're doing our other things, what, you know, what's the location? What's the feasibility? What's the cost of it? Is it feasible for both localities to look at proceeding, and if so, how to proceed? And so this is just looking for grant funding for that.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments?
I do. What are we gonna do with, when we get the report? We don't have any money. Just voted not to go up on the water bill to pay for it. I mean, what are we gonna do?
Well, it would give us a report like the Olive Branch Road and the Atkins Mill and the other, to at least understand where we are. And plus, it helps, as Smith County has some areas that they want to grow out there. It may be like the Carroll County water line where it's advantageous for them to want to expand and connect to our system, and we pay a smaller debt service on that part if, you know, based on the number of customers we're serving and the capacity of that line that we need. It's a good potential that Smith County will need a lot more of the capacity for development out there than what we will. But that's what we'll be looking at to see. Plus, the advantage is it would also give us, you know, more usage on the western end of the system, on the water, which we would like to have more usage out there, to have more turnover as well.
If you're just gonna sit there dormant, I do not see that because I have people in my area that wants water, and we have no money to give it to them.
Well, that's why we're just asking for the grant funding on this, to look at it and see it. And if it determines it's not feasible, like some of the other projects we looked at, then we have that. But if it helps us on our regional planning and our regional partnerships there on potential development, we can look at that and see.
Any more questions or comments? Here or none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. And I will say, you know, we're gonna have to address the water situation, water rates at some point in time, and that's why, you know, we'll put it back to committee, and we'll bring it back to the board. Either the individuals that are supplied with water have the opportunity to have county water, either we raise the rates and they pay for the water, or eventually we're gonna have to take the money out of the general fund, which everybody, all residents are paying for the water, and which I don't think, you know, that's right, in my opinion, that, you know, the entire population that, you know, wants water, and they can't get it, then they're gonna have to start paying for it. So we'll address that in the Water Committee again, and it'll be before the board again.
When you all address it, I'm not 100% against it. I just don't like the 10%, and I really don't agree with the same years of tax increase.
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
I think, I understand we're gonna have to do something. I think if we're looking at revising or restructuring the entire fee billing structure, then we should look at the rates with the revised billing structure.
And that's something that the Water Committee will be looking at, and Don, I mean, you know, it's gonna take us a year to revise the whole rate system, at least a year. And if it's board's pleasure to wait until we revise the whole thing, you know, maybe that's what we'll do, but...
You did say we had enough in reserves to cover the deficit this year.
We do, yes.
How many years has it operated with the deficit?
I'm not sure I can answer that, going back and looking. But within the last five years, when we've added some of these really large projects, basically the western end of the county, that's probably was a lot of it. And then there were some rate changes back. And then there were some rate changes back before that that affected, where they dropped the rates actually. That didn't help the reserve any.
When the Brinkley spoke last week, they, they talked about the rate was originally eleven dollars and it went up to eighteen dollars and that, back when Mr. Hagie was, was on the Board of Supervisors at that point in time, they dropped the, the non-user rate to nine or eleven, eleven dollars to start off with. And it really started, between that and the rate, it started putting the, the numbers going in the wrong direction. And so, the board did take the big step of going from eleven dollars to eighteen dollars, I don't remember how many years ago that was.
Two thousand and twelve or thirteen, somewhere around in there.
And, and came up to that level. So, I mean, what they said was correct, there was, it had been up at the higher level, it dropped down, it, it came back up to that level. And then what really hit, the, the debt service on the Royal Tree, With County, Withfield Royal Tree Project, the Spiegel Project and then the Baron Springs Project all came in. And so, we can look at it, but it's, it's, it's been quite a few years that it, that it has been.
And, you know, the people out there is wanting water and it's hard to sit here and, and, you know, like Coy's got people in his district, we had several people here at the Water Committee meeting, we met in here, people wanting water, so...
And it, and it takes, for us to do a lot of expansion of our water system along the lines of what Coy is saying, ideally, it's better to be in a situation where you can qualify for grant funds for rural development for such projects. And right now, we do not qualify for grant funding because rural development's fee structure has got it probably forty, forty-eight, forty-nine dollars, somewhere in there, which is higher than what our fee structure is even with the proposed increase, so...
Do they mandate the amount of the non-user fee?
Do not mandate the amount, no.
They just mandate that you have to have a mandatory connection.
Yes.
But they don't tell, they don't say With County, you have to charge because those are the complaints I get.
Yeah.
I, I don't get complaints that the water rates are too high, I get complaints that I don't want to hook up to it, I'm never going to hook up to it and I don't like paying this bill anymore.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
I, for my district, I'd like to see that, something done with that.
That's the biggest complaint.
Yeah, we have, out of the three thousand users, we have about four hundred and some that are currently non-users of the water system, so fifteen...
Three hundred and eighty of those live in my district.
Not exactly.
Based on the phone calls.
There, there are a few.
The only way we're going to ever get any money in the water department is to get more customers. We're sitting on probably two hundred and fifty, three hundred customers, so we don't have no money to get no water.
And we're going to have to charge a reasonable rate, I mean, we just can't, you do look at these other counties, you know, Carroll County and, I don't know, I can't remember what Smith County's is.
Smith is higher than, is... A little higher than ours, yeah.
Carroll's a little less.
Carroll's a little lower.
But it's really, you know, really individual, each county and their...
I mean, Worthing County charged a lot more than, than what we charge. I mean, they, they do it, you know, I'd like, that's kind of the system I'd like to see us go to is what Worthing County has got. But that's, like I said, that's revamping the whole structure of the billing and that'll take a while. But, we'll discuss it Water Committee and, and at the next Water Committee meeting. Are you going to have a, a special call meeting before?
On the Water Committee, we, we probably will before the, in order to get some of these things lined up, it'll be before the next Water Committee meeting.
Okay. Okay, next, Budget Committee.
The Budget Committee met on August twenty-second, twenty eighteen and made the following recommendations. Number one is to transfer a two thousand eight Chevrolet Blazer being ending in three-two-three-nine from the Sheriff's Office to the Lead Mine Rescue Squad.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And Chair votes, aye. Next item.
To transfer twenty-five thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars from the Electronic Summons Fund into thirty-one oh-two law enforcement and traffic control and amend and appropriate the same, thirty-one oh-two dash forty-seven zero-zero-one-five. These funds will purchase hardware and software necessary to coordinate with the new Spelman software.
Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion?
And basically transferring that to the thirty-one oh-two is basically transferring that to the general fund to pay for those items.
Any other question or discussion? Here none, Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 Chair votes, aye. Next item.
To amend and appropriate five thousand dollars to thirty-one oh-twenty-one dash forty-six one-two-six-zero. These funds were donated by Flying J to assist in purchasing equipment needed for an active shooting training event.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, any questions, discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes, aye. Next item.
To accept the National Highway Safety, Traffic Safety Administration grants and to amend and appropriate the same. Selective Enforcement Speed, thirty-five thousand, Alcohol, sixteen thousand five hundred, Occupant Protection, eleven thousand three hundred seventy-five.
Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, any question or discussion?
I will mention that the matching funds required for this come out of the, the sheriff uses fuel expenditures that they have to go towards this and that covers the matching.
Any other questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horny?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes, aye. Next item.
To transfer two thousand thirty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents from state asset forfeiture funds to twenty-two oh-one dash four-six-four zero-one-zero, Commonwealth Attorney for the purchase of new case management software.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, any questions?
Would you also include with that amend and appropriate, which I believe is what your committee said, it just does not have that on the couple that are right here.
And amend and appropriate, sorry.
Okay, I think that was what come out of committee, so I'm still not asked for a second, but any other questions or... Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And Chair votes, aye. Next item.
To amend and appropriate forty-eight thousand dollars to four-three-zero-four-eight buildings and grounds for adding the maintenance form and position for salary and fringe benefits.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, any questions, discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horny?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes, aye. Next item.
To publish the twenty-seventeen delinquent personal property tax listing on the county's website.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, any discussion?
Our intentions are we'll take and put that in a PDF form, we'll put it on the website and also install a link from it from our social media sites, if that's what you all would like, so people can search that up.
Yeah. Again, the reason why we're doing this, it's not cost of, it, it, three thousand and some names, I believe, it's on the list, so it's not feasible to try to put that in the paper or cost, it probably costs us a arm and leg to do that, so putting electronic on the website and putting out links where people can see it is our best option. Any other questions?
I hate it, I hate the embarrassment of it for people, but we have to do what's best for the county.
Any other? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes, aye. That's all from the Budget Committee.
That's all.
Okay, County Administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jeff Russell is coming in this morning, he may walk in the door at any time now and I would request that when he walks in that we go ahead and move into VDOT time. Before we get started, the superintendent was going to come this morning, but due to a, a bus accident, which did not have any injuries and no kids on the bus, he has been delayed and I don't know if...
Dr. Poehl, Ms. James, would you like to say a few words? How's school going?
It was a great start, actually. I'll let Dr. James mention some of the best news that we did.
Come on up.
Thank you for the, allow me the time to share this good news. Last week, Monday, Wednesday as a matter of fact, we received our state reports and we were seventh in the Commonwealth for student academic achievement. We were tenth last year and seventh this year and we are just elated. Fifth in math in the state, if you know our history, math's been our Achilles' heel and to come as far as being fifth in the state in math and eighth in reading and it's just, I still get cold chills just thinking about all the hard work that's, that's been put into, that our students have done. And we want to thank our custodians, our cafeteria workers, everybody had a hand in this, bus drivers to get us where we are, seventh in the state, so we're tickled and wanted to share that information with you today.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
You want to give an update on the renovation?
I'll be happy to.
Ain't going to let you get by, not sitting up here and saying stuff.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Board, Mr. Bear, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you concerning the renovation at George With High School. Currently, we are in the demo stage, which is always the easiest stage where you're just tearing stuff up. The new wing, the science classrooms are being gutted, the ceiling is out, the restrooms have been demolished, the library is in the process of being demoed. Most of the walls will be coming down in that area either today or tomorrow, a reconfiguration of a couple of rooms. The old Family Consumer Science area and the marketing classrooms, the classrooms at the very end of the hallway, there's one wall in each that will be demoed out. I've met with science teachers, art teachers, librarians, drama teachers for the configuration of those classrooms as far as what casework is needed. And one of the good things about it, we had some, because this is the newer section of the building, we had some casework that is still in very good shape. We're going to reuse some of those items in the art classroom and the Family Consumer Science areas. For the, basically the six-foot tall cabinets, they'll have new hardware placed on them, but the cabinetry themselves are still in very good shape, so we're going to reuse those items. The science classrooms are going to have less casework at the request of science teachers. They felt like they needed some other things in those classrooms rather than having too much casework where they would actually have better use for it with desk and some other open area requirements that they, they need. The library itself, the, basically the box where the library sits will remain the same, but the configuration within the library will be a little different. One thing that we are working on in the library, we have the wooden chairs that you're familiar with. We had the Technology Center redo one of the chairs and it looks like brand new and the librarian loved it, so instead of purchasing new chairs, we're going to use the old chairs and save basically two hundred and sixty-two dollars per piece of furniture because those are solid wood and they're still in fantastic shape. One item that we will probably be discussing in the future is the generator at George With. As you know, that was a grant-funded item for sheltering operations, a hundred and seventy-five KW generator with the switch gears and everything that is associated with it. The switch gears will remain in place, but the generator itself is going to be upsized for the forced air, or the forced air needs for the heating unit. So, it will end up being a six hundred KW generator for the new requirements. That will leave us with the old generator that has the potential to be relocated, relocated at a different school for an additional shelter if needed. Now, what that would require at the other school, I think Fort Chiswell is probably the most likely recipient of that generator, we would have to purchase new switch gears and do the electrical upgrade in that area just to make sure that it ties in with the current system. Because there's, there's no forced air requirements at Fort Chiswell, it's still steam heat, you don't have the same issue. So, that generator would run everything within that building or the vast majority of it in the future. We will get to that later on as far as what will, what the needs are, but that is something that is out there at the current time. If anyone wants to come by and see the renovation, be welcome to take anyone on a tour.
I'll be up there, it won't be next week, but in a couple of weeks I'd like to go through and see.
Let me know when you go.
Absolutely, and auditorium, what we've done, met with the sound and light guy last week. Basically, you have the dropped ceiling and all LED lighting will be put back in place in the auditorium. All the components for the sound and light where the controls are on the stage now will be moved to the old spotlight room that's on the second floor. That keeps a lot of hands off of the equipment that don't need to be on that equipment. The seats are getting ready, they're going to pull the seats very soon to start reupholstering, basically sandblasts repaint and put those back in. New carpet will be going down. We're waiting until the seats are out to look at the concrete under the seats to see what we need to do if they, we're looking at an epoxy, if we're going to have to go with something like a BCT to cover any damages or anything else on those, in those areas, so... But again, give me a call, let me know, we'll take a tour, I'm over there every day.
Thank you, Dr. Poehl. Okay, Mr. Russell, VDOT, come on up, we won't hold you up from work, so...
Hello?
Morning, Mr. Russell.
Just kind of give you a quick update on some of our six-year projects we got going on. We recently completed Crawford Road and the Sharn's Drive projects and they have started on the New Bethel and Nixon Roads. So, that's, that's what they're working on now. My understanding, they're getting along pretty good with those, so hopefully they won't take too long and we can get to knocking out some more, so... That's, that's about all I have and other than just routine maintenance that we're, we're trying to keep up with, going to start our second round of mowing, hopefully. Still doing some schedule work on our patching and paving. That's, that's my report, so I'll take any concerns or comments you all have.
Okay, I'll start over here with Mr. Ball.
Um, my brain locked up, I can't think of the road name. Mushroom Mill, Mushroom Mill Road, take a look at it. I know the log yard or whatever that's been pretty active was, could hurt on that road. I guess the, the heavy trucks and... Can you tell me what the plan is with Blacklit? They, they took a nice paved road and put that slurry mix on it. You may have to explain to me the reasoning behind that because it was a lot smoother before.
Well, you, basically, you've got three types of hard surfacing. You have a surface treatment, that's what we normally do with our rural rustic, that's tar and gravel. Then you have plant mix, that's pavement, what we call pavement. Slurry is kindly, it's a, it's a method that's in between the two. It's not as smooth, probably not as durable as plant mix, but it's a whole lot more economical. And it, probably it is more durable than the surface treatment in itself, so a lot of the routes, we, we, bottom line, we don't have enough money to go and put plant mix on all the roads that needs it. So, either we do nothing or we can, we're, we're, VDOT as a whole, we look at slurry seal. That's, that's emulsified asphalt, it's a mixture, it prolongs the life of the existing pavement, hopefully until we can get it on a schedule for repaving. pavement, hopefully until we can get it on a schedule for repaving.
Well, I guess my question was, it was, seemed to be in really good shape. I'm not sure why the need to put the slurry on top of it.
That I do not know.
Well, I would recommend, if you, do me a favor and ride down there and see what I'm talking about, ride and ride.
I mean, is there a, other than the smoothness, I mean, is it?
It was perfectly smooth to start with it. I understand it prolongs life, but it hadn't been that long since it'd been pavement. I don't know, Mr. Farthing probably tell me how long it had been since they paved.
How many years?
To me, it looked like it was unnecessary to even do it.
Well, you know, generally speaking, pavement, we figure a 10-year lifespan. That's give or take according to the conditions. And for the slurry to be effective, you need to catch it before it starts on the downhill deteriorating. Once it starts deteriorating, slurry's probably not a viable candidate. If you get cracking, it's going to come right through the slurry. So if you're looking at eight or nine years, then it looks like it probably, even though it may have looked good to the eye, it's approaching the end of its lifespan. That's an ideal time to catch these with the slurry seal, so. But I, you know, once again, I don't know what was there before these are set up by the maintenance managers on their yearly schedules, so we're giving X amount of dollars to use slurry seal on roads, and they're the ones that choose the roads that they go on to try to prolong the life until we can get them put on the paving schedule.
And they recap Kinder Valley, which was in good shape, but they stopped before you get to Elders Farm out there, and it's pretty much impossible from there to retreat Lake Road. I don't think you can dodge potholes unless you ride the ditch, which would help you guys out, but if you could do something out there with the potholes, it's pretty bad.
We'll certainly take a look.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lester.
I don't have any road code.
Ms. Lawson.
I don't have any at this time, thank you.
It's not to be in a town of Whitfield.
Yeah, we're in those towns.
Mr. McRoberts.
Mr. Russell, we had a, Mr. Ogden, this concerned a stretch of road from Fels Lane to Dunford Road. And he was in here about a month, month and a half ago, and he asked to get the speed limit reduced. They reduced it from 50, 55 to 50, and he would like to see it lower than that. And he also says that he'll give you the land there where that curve is, and he's got a person to take the shell, the dirt, whatever, and the field dumping. You know what I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm.
If that would help you, then he just, he's afraid somebody's going to get killed. Well, he just had one killed about a year ago there.
I don't believe that was attributed to the road conditions, though. They, we recommended they do a speed study, they came out and, and that's what they, by whatever methods and means they use, that's what they come up with, and that's what it's probably going to stay, it's probably not going to be lowered anymore.
They put a sign up there that said 50 mile an hour, that Dunford Road, and then right below it, they put a yellow sign there that says, "Save speed, don't be fast."
Right.
What he's saying is they don't look at that yellow sign.
Well, if they don't look at the yellow sign, then they may not look at the white one. We've also got "slow" painted in the road on both sides, warning people, you know, slow down before you get to the curves. At some point, you can put up all the signs you want, you can put all the speed limits, at some point, it's up to people to make their own judgment.
And he says the ditches there in front of his was, so.
We'll have them look at it.
Thank you.
Did you mention the mowing? Did you mention the mowing?
It may be a long area, especially called a slight distance with those curves, if they can take a look at that and maybe put that on top of their priority list.
We're hoping to get started with the, what we hope to be the last round of mowing here shortly, so I'll tell them that's a priority.
Gene?
I've had complaints about the mowing, which you've already said y'all were starting on that again, and I knew they were, because they were mowing on Ridge Avenue yesterday. They keep an eye on Pope Road, of course. Have you heard anything on the bridge? Same as always.
No news.
If you need to slow them people down on 94, there's a farmer over our way that puts good speed bumps in, they fixed that. They have smoothed that one back out, but he put one in over there that was slowing down.
We'll take that under consideration.
It's so you can slow down and take in the ambiance.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of things, again, Painter Hill Road needs to be paved, I'm still getting calls on that. Put on the schedule, I don't know when it's scheduled, but it's pretty rough. And I noticed the other day, and I'm in those, and the culvert on Chapman Road right there at my house, it's down over the bank, what goes under Chapman Road and into the interstate system. The last big heavy downpour we got, it wore some limbs and debris in the dirt, it needs to be cleaned out, or maybe the next time it may get plum stopped, and that's a pretty big, big culvert. But that's all I have. Stephen?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of items. Number one, just want to express appreciation to Jeff and organizing District Engineer, Mr. Hamilton, coming up last Friday. He and Jeff and Mr. Hale, I think, did a few sites throughout the county, and I appreciate them taking time to take a look at that. Also, been working with Pam, Charlie, and Supervisor Lester and Supervisor Vaughn, are both aware of, there's a looking at a request to close a state-maintained roadway, Buckley Drive there in rural retreat. Ms. Castle and I probably need to sit down and meet with you all, we've got the process and procedures. We have received a letter, the road has not really been used other than to get to the first house for quite some time, it was an old road that was in existence prior to the interstate coming through, when the interstate cut it off, they considered it to be a state-maintained road. There are some landowners having some differences on it, but they have, she has submitted a request. We will need to advertise a request to hold a public hearing, which I guess my question is, I'm certain that the gentleman that's back there behind him is probably definitely going to request a public hearing due to his interest in that road. Can we just go straight to a public hearing without going that step first, or do we need to do, replace the request for, what's it called, a willingness to hold a public hearing?
I'll have to check, I've never had that, that's a unique question, but I'll check and find out if we can go ahead and just have the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, if we can go ahead and send them out both, but I thought if it's going to go to, it'd save time to go ahead and do that and proceed to public hearing. There's only two landowners from everything that I can imagine, so that's affected by this old roadway.
What's the distance?
Um, the distance on paper is about .13 miles or .16 miles, but, which is about 700 feet or so, something like that, but only 200 to 300 feet of it have ever been used in the last 50 years from what we can tell. And I don't even know that VDOT's done any maintenance on that 200 or 300 feet in a very long time. It's basically a driveway.
Are you requesting to take it out, or just leave part of it in?
The landowner's requesting to take all of it back up to Route 11. She has treated it, the family treated it as a driveway for years, just to take it back to a driveway. So I'll give maps and everything else to you all, so you all can see it, but we will be needing to hold a public hearing on that coming up.
Are you, are you vacating the roadway, or just?
Vacating and abandoning the roadway is what they're looking at.
And there's two landowners?
Yeah. Anyway, if, chilling, I'll give you a call, maybe you and Pam and I can discuss it sometime this week and just make certain of those steps, and then we'll have it on the next board agenda for setting a public hearing or such.
Does anybody else have any more questions for Mr. Russell? Mr. Russell, we appreciate you coming.
All right, thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
You, too. Mr. Baer, you want to continue with your report?
Yes, a couple items before you hear, Mr. Chairman. First of all, is just informational purpose showing the Highway 21 road market study. Mr. Vaughn and I are going to attempt to locate the numbers from last year, and I've asked him to put together a spreadsheet showing the differences, but VDOT put their calendars out, and as you can see, in general, it was 50 to 60% increase in a lot of areas between the control group and the road market group. The advantage is it don't that count, just to see how many people are coming through, but also it does help them with any grant applications or tourism applications that they're working on. The next item, USDA Wildlife Services Program, they are dropping the oral rabies vaccines in various areas, just providing you all that map. I've seen quite a bit of this shared on social media and going around, so everyone is aware of these packets that are being dropped. If y'all have any questions or would like for someone to come and talk to us about it from National Forestry, we would certainly have them come and talk to us. But that's just for informational purposes, and Blake, you're also supposed to be providing this information out to our citizens. Next is a resolution, 2018-29, Temporary Detention Order on Transportation. You may have seen an article in the newspaper where the town of Whitfield just adopted such a resolution. The, I think Town of Marion is sort of the, taking the lead on trying to get a lot of these adopted. I will let Mr. Vaughn give a little bit of explanation of why it isn't beneficial to Whitfield County in the process.
I was hoping you were just going to let me make a motion to adopt it.
You go right ahead.
Just to give you a background, the law enforcement, it's basically another unfunded mandate from Richmond. Law enforcement, either sheriff's office or local PDs are charged with transporting people up under temporary detention orders for mental health treatment. When I first started, Marion was our number-one stop, and now they're using Southwestern State Hospital, Marion is absolute master's order. In Whitfield County, we're having to send people to, Petersburg used to be what we considered a long trip, but now we're going to Virginia Beach, places that are, you know, seven, eight hours. And it's not beneficial to the person to ride in the back of a police car to go get mental health treatment. That doesn't help them, and basically what this resolution is doing is, they want the state of Virginia to make Southwestern State a, the number-one priority for this end of the state, which would require some money coming out of Richmond. I don't think it's any secret that they've been cutting their funds and probably wouldn't hurt their feelings to see that facility closed, but as bad as we think we've got it in Whitfield County, you talk to some of these deputies from over in Lee County, and, you know, when you have three or four people on night shift and you have to send two of them to Virginia Beach, then you have to pay somebody overtime, and that falls back on the taxpayer. But that being said, I'll make, proudly make the motion that we adopt that resolution.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? On this, will there need to be a bill put in to the General Assembly to make this happen?
I'm sure they have already contacted Senator Carrico, Delegate Campbell, who may double check, but I know the Town of Marion is the one that started it. I think it's basically just a procedural thing.
Well, I mean, is the R code that specifies where they're taken to now, or is it just?
That's a good question. I don't know that it's in the Code of Virginia, I think it's just a procedural guide through, I can't think of the agency, I can see the initials, but whichever agency oversees mental health treatment.
Okay, any other questions, comments, here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
Aye. The chair votes aye. Next item.
Next item is for informational purposes, a couple months back, you all adopted the resolution for establishing Route 52 as veteran memorial highway. I have been working with Eric Workman in Blaine County, and Steve Truitt in Carroll County for a dedication celebration to be scheduled for one of the Saturdays in October. The reason why the date is not established, the, Mr. Truitt is trying to work with, possibly seeing if the governor might be able to come down on one of those Saturdays, and we'll certainly be amenable on our schedule. We're going to have to lock this date down very soon, but in essence, it would start in Blaine County at the Veterans Memorial there, brief ceremony, come down to Whitfield County. Mr. Vaughn is assisting me with planning activities in Whitfield County, which we will have out at Shot Tower, State Park along 52. Sam Sweeney is willing to host that event there and to help us out, and then it'll end up in Carroll County with the final celebration there. So as, as we hear information back from the governor's office, we will finalize this date. The second Saturday is the only date that is definitely out right now, looking at the first, third or fourth Saturdays for that.
In which month, September?
October.
October.
So excited about it, hopefully we can have some, a few individuals involved with it, from Boy Scouts, possibly your JROTC, or maybe some of the allegiance of veterans from wars, establishment assistance. Just information, look forward to it, and if anyone wants to take the whole ride that day, you can start in Blaine and end up downhill, but if not, at least walk and get off in Philly, but later that morning. Next item on the agenda is to keep a project moving along, is the Ricky Road Waterline Extension Project. Unfortunately, Mr. Vaughn had to step out, but this is a project you all have already agreed to previously, and Mr. McRoberts has some people down there needing some water. Attached is the A and E Services Agreement for $30,000 for basic and additional services, and I would recommend that the board approve this A and E agreement.
Okay, we have a recommendation from staff, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to get motion.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Vaughn.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have one additional item, if you would permit me to go with that one, it'd be all right. At the last meeting, if you all remember, you all approved a change order for RGM Construction Services to put a hood and dent system in for one of the concession stands, and at that time, it was discussed that there was a desire to have one on the other side as well, but not go through the full expense of a complete system being installed there. So what you have before you is a proposal that Mr. Vaughn has provided to me for RGM to just do the piping and the venting and the equipment that goes with that, a recommendation A recommendation for a change order in the amount of $8,721. So they can go ahead and get that installed.
And this, this is everything but the fire compression system?
Yes, sir. The mechanical and electrical rough end, for lack of a better word, it's still up through the ceiling, through the roof, the metalwork, the flashing, it all needs to be done now. So that in the future, all you're having to do is bring in the hood equipment.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
So move.
Have a second.
Aye.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion?
This is coming out of money that's already allocated, correct?
Yes.
And it's going to be a lot cheaper to do now than later?
Cheaper, and it also does, it helps protect your warranty on the roof, because this is the contractor that's warranting the roof. So they're responsible for putting this in, so that was the reason why I'm going ahead and putting it in now. Typically, we go through a construction committee, but we've not had time to schedule a construction committee since this came in. And since the contractor is getting close to ending on their final month operation, I'd rather not wait for another board meeting on this, so that's the reason why I went ahead and brought it.
We're going to need it in the future, so.
Okay, any more quick?
Just for curiosity, what would it cost if we put the whole thing in?
It was about $31,000 for the full change order on the other one.
That one's $19,000. That's some.
Nineteen, yeah.
About, we want to double. And as you pointed out, with them doing the work now, and they're the primary contractors for the warranty work on the roof. They put the roof penetration in, and we get warranty, but they're coming back later with another contractor.
Yeah. Okay.
Thirty thousand, the A and E fix that we just did, nineteen thousand.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Is that all you have, Mr. Murray?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, that is all that I have.
County Attorney, Mr. Farley?
I don't see anything at this time.
Okay. Board of Supervisors report. Black Lake District, Mr. Vaughn?
Mr. Russell took care of most of my questions and complaints. But I want to follow up on what Dr. James said. With the school system being ranked number seven, she mentioned last year they were number 10th. And that's certainly impressive, but I think it's even more impressive when we go back a few years and four years ago, and Becky may have to correct me on that. 69th, so in four years, these teachers and students have went from 69th to 7th. And I think that's certainly accomplishment. And I think we ought to recognize that either by a letter to Dr. Jeffries that he can forward to the faculty and the staff and the students, or whatever the board's pleasure is. But I think gains such as that, we need to, as a board, somehow recognize.
I agree. Steven, if you'd look into preparing something that we can adopt. And all, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lester, West Whipple?
Nothing at this time.
Miss Ryan?
I don't have anything at this time.
Mr. Hale's not here. Landmines?
Nothing at this time.
Spiegel?
Nothing that hasn't already been brought up.
And I just had something about the convenience centers. I talked to Steven Hasty. And hopefully, we'll have that little situation taken care of. Have you heard anything?
No, I have not.
I need to call him back. Okay.
In the absence of Mr. Hale, I will just mention that I am aware that the Max Meadows Heritage Day is coming up on September 26th at the Max Meadows Field.
Yes.
He always mentions that to all of you all, and I just want to go ahead and let you all know if any of you all want to put that on your calendar. Mr. Reeves, say more of the hours of operation. I don't remember what time they start.
Ten before, I think. There's, vendor sets up. People get there earlier than that. They do have hamburgers, hot dogs, food there, music. I mean, it's a, it's a good day. I go every year, try to, try to help Mr. Hale and all the things that has to be done down there. And the community really enjoys it. They have a real good turnout there. And this year, I think they're going to have a lot, a lot more livestock there than what they've been having come. They changed the dates. They used to have it on the third Saturday, and that's when the thing was over in Foster. Over in Foster Falls, and Flea Market was in Dublin. So they moved it a week later, so a lot more people can come. But anybody can come out. It's a real good day down there. Okay, we'll go into new buildings. We have the consent calendar. If I can find it here on my.
Make a motion to approve consent calendar presented.
We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar. Any question or discussion? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item is floodplain administration memorandum of understanding.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spraker's here to talk a little bit about that. He's been working with DCR. And we have a floodplain manage, or floodplain ordinance. And Mr. Spraker serves as our administrator of that ordinance with the Building Inspection Department. And I want him to talk a little bit about his discussions with DCR and the Town of Rural Tree.
Okay, Mr. Spraker?
Board, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to provide a little insight on the National Flood Insurance Program, which we are part of. And from time to time, they change or update their regulations, rules, and standards. And we, in turn, have to also do ours. And there's, there's not a, there's not a great change. They, they make recommendations, and then they have their standards. So one of the recommendations was to, since we do floodplain management for the Town of Rural Tree, that we adopt a letter of agreement with the town. They will have their own floodplain management program. And in turn, we will help them manage their program through FEMA's standards, rules, and regulations. Sort of a, we all follow their floodplain, and they don't have a whole lot of floodplain in their area. As a matter of fact, it's changed. And if you ever went on the Virginia system and looked at their floodplain, there are a lot of letters of map amendments that they do. And it actually pulls them out of floodplain areas. So their floodplain areas are actually dwindling. But that, that agreement allows us to have a connection. The DCR looks as a disconnect right now that we're not having enough, or there's not a connection there to follow the floodplain rules and regulations. So this, this will help fill that gap. It's just a recommendation. On the other side, there are some things that we need to put in our ordinance that the National Flood Insurance Program has updated to. And that's, one of the items is a, that residential accessory buildings. And the building code is a little bit different as far as square footage. But if you put a building in the, an accessory building in a floodplain, the square footage is, is a little different, and that's 600 square foot building. Nothing, nothing larger than that. You can have an accessory building per code up to 3,000 square feet. But when it hits in the flood zone, if you want to put it in the flood zone, it, it goes down to 600 square feet. And it is used for storage, excuse me, storage only. And it has to be anchored in. If there's any, depending on what flood zone it's in, it will have to have a floodzone construction also. Has to be built to withstand floodwaters.
We have, we have got a draft put together, not presented to you yet. We'll have our county attorney take a look at it and see for amending our floodplain management ordinance. Part of the questions I have tasked in, Mr. Spraker, Mr. Banks, I don't know what his name is with the DCR.
Charlie Banks.
A little bit of conflicting information. They're recommending that our ordinance be updated to state that it includes the Town of Rural Tree, which currently it doesn't. It, it doesn't indicate that, it doesn't address the unincor, or the incorporated areas. It looks like it already addresses it. And plus, in this memorandum of understanding that they put together, it says that the Town of Rural Tree agrees to pass a floodplain ordinance. So I want to get those clarified. Either Rural Tree needs a floodplain ordinance, or Rural Tree needs to drop this indicating that their ordinance follows, that they're going to our ordinance, since he wants our ordinance to go to this. So before we drop this memorandum of understanding, I would recommend that we get this amendment to our ordinance in place and also confirm whether they need an ordinance, or whether we just need to have them covered under our ordinance in this situation. In general, the way it's always functioned is they have just sort of, I guess, granted that authority to the county for seeing that things are meeting the floodplain management.
Is there any time restraints on having this implemented?
I'm not really, Mr. Banks.
No, no, no. As soon as possible. They typically give a six-month period.
So if that's okay, and following our discussion, we just, we want to let you all be aware of it. If you all had any concerns about it, it's relatively straightforward. And you look at the agreement, we appear to be taking on a lot more responsibility than we are. That's because we are the managing agency of it. But it's typically the things that we're, we're going to have.
And Whipple's not included in this?
Whipple is not included. Whitfield, I did talk to Steve Moore on that. Mr. Spraker and I called him. They have their own floodplain management ordinance, and they oversee their own floodplain management as well. So that's an item that I want Mr. Banks addressing on ours. Do we need to clarify our ordinance that it does not cover the incorporated areas of Whitfield? And that it does or does not cover Rural Tree?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Spraker? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Murray, anything else to bring forward the board at this time?
Just wanted to let you know, Mr. Vaughn has presented to me and to the Water Department for paying and to the AP Department for paying the final closeout on the Poplar Camp wastewater treatment plant.
You have the contract too?
The contract too. You have reviewed everything, and that project is 100% completed and ready for that final payment on it.
You have the consent of asserting the final payment.
So just wanted to let you all know, unless you all had any questions, we will go ahead and process those final payments. But I've asked Mr. Vaughn on all these projects, as we, as we're finalizing them, just to go ahead and make certain that the final approval's coming to the board to look at.
Oh, that's, one more thing I want to bring up. I come through Old 52, where the water line goes up through there, you know, crosses the road and goes around there, Poplar Camp. Where they put the water line up there is washed out. It needs, side of the road, it's in pretty bad shape. I come through there Saturday.
Now, I have to talk to the I about that, because I believe, we are outside the warning period on that work. But their LUP requirements might be.
You might not go over and look at it, because it's right when you start downhill back to 52, the new road. But that way, it's, down that hill, it's rough where they put that water line in.
We'll take a look at it. Mr. Chairman, I do believe that is all that I have. I would like to have a meeting with the construction, Apex Construction Committee. Whether today or now is a good time for going there, or whether 8:00 in the morning is a better time for going there than you all.
Today? I know Mr. Hale ain't here. Mr. Lester, you want to sit in? Can you sit in?
Okay.
We're going to do it now?
Yeah.
If it's 15 minutes or so, we'll go over, we'll make 11 o'clock. That'll work.
Okay. Dean Board member have anything to bring forward the board at this time? Here none. We'll be in recess until September the 4th at 5:30? PM?